Good evening, and I'd like to call our Tuesday, August 20th, 2019 Pickwa City Commission Meeting to order. Let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have our roll call, please? Mayor Hines?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Grissom?
Here.
Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner, vote.
Here.
Okay, and the next thing on our docket are any public announcements? Do we have any announcements this evening? And for some reason, the podium is turned the way it is. If you'll pull the microphone back so you can speak into it, that would be great.
Good evening. Jeff Lang at 9586 North State Route 66. I wanted to come tonight and speak on behalf of the project that was posed to the city of Pickwa and the city of Troy as far as the low-head dam removal at the Pickwa Power Plant. I am all for removal of that dam as it is a very dangerous item on the Great Miami River. Low dams, in a sense, are just nothing but drowning machines due to the hydraulic jump between the water levels of the pooled water and the water down below the dam. To my knowledge, the city of Pickwa spent almost $20,000 on the dam a couple of years ago redoing the, refacing the concrete and painting the sealed superstructure that raises and lower the gates. The dam removal will help increase biodiversity of the fish and aquatic life in the river up above this dam itself. Aquatic life also includes macroinvertebrate, the small bugs that live on the bottom of rocks that are the food source for smaller fish all the way up through the food chain. The dam's removal will also increase recreational opportunities for canoeers, kayakers, stand-up paddleboarders, fishermen, and people that float down the river. Keeping the dam for the reason of possible powersports and motorsports, I think, is a dangerous idea, even though there is a club that's been down there for decades. I have checked into the requirements for having a slalom course on the Great Miami River. I have not heard back from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources yet, from the navigational aids coordinator, but an agent will be out taking a look at the water skiing venue out there now. I have measured on Google Earth the dimensions of the river where the course is set up right now, and it's almost 200 foot across. From what knowledge I can find out on the Internet at the U.S. Water Skiing Association website, there needs to be a minimum of 275 foot of width for a slalom ski course, and the 275 foot of width has to be a minimum of five foot of depth at 275 left and 275 to the right. We currently don't have that. The fastest-growing segment of registered boats in every state in the United States are paddlecraft. No one has or would want to run around the Great Miami River through Pickwa due to our low dam. It's dangerous. We have no portage around it, and we just have steep slopes on its side which are lined with big, sharp, pointed rocks for people to get hurt on. Our Great Miami River in Pickwa, specifically from North Dayton all the way up to the headwaters at Indian Lake, is considered exceptional warm-water habitat by the Ohio EPA's Water Source Report last done in 2012. That is the highest level the Ohio EPA will give our type of a river going through farmland in southwest Ohio. The next step down and the lowest step in the categories is just warm-water habitat. Those Ohio EPA-rated parts of the GMR that are in that warm-water habitat, the lowest level, are the 1.2 miles up from the Pickwa Power Plant Dam and the .5 miles up from the low dam that's used by the Pickwa Water Plant to pull off water. Removing the dams will lower water temperature, increase oxygen levels, lower phosphase and nitrogen levels, and make better spawning feeding areas on the Great Miami for fishes and aquatic life. The newly exposed land will sprout trees and grasses, and that would be better-looking all along the river. It will also provide shade to cool those waters. Low dam removal is supported by the Miami Conservancy District, the Ohio EPA, the U.S. EPA, ODNR, and the U.S. Fisheries and Wildlife, who has been sponsoring the meetings and explaining to the citizens of Pickwa and Troy the benefits of lowering or taking those dams out. There have been five low-head dams removed in the city of Dayton, one in Inglewood and West Milton. The rivers are healthier now and supports much more recreational use. If the dam could be removed at the Pickwa Power Plant, it would open up a nice venue for the river as it'd be running naturally. Possibly, we could put in rocks along the way so that there would be a venue for kayakers and canoeers to have different experiences on the Great Miami through Pickwa, which would be something that young recreationists would like to do all through the United States. They want to find things that are challenging for paddlers. As the water goes up when it rains, it could be more challenging for those that have the more experience. When the water's at normal level, those same canoeers or kayakers, other family members that are not as experienced, could paddle it and have safe journey all the way through. You could actually put in north of Pickwa, go through Pickwa, stop along the way, and continue to journey all the way down to Troy. Hopefully, Troy will also remove their dam, and you can keep on going. It's just like the bike trail, folks. You connect cities, you connect cities through rivers. A low dam is a hindrance to traveling on the river safely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Jock. I live at 607 North Sunset Drive. I just have two quick announcements. Number one is that today, the State of Ohio, the auditor's office was supposed to have released your audited statements, and last year, your statements weren't too good, so I would hope you guys would take an opportunity to jump on this right now and start to see where your weaknesses are at. You're obviously having cash flow problems, so they should be released today, and your auditor, they pinpoint those specific concerns for you, so there's no, you know, you should just jump on that right now. Second thing I want to announce is that on my way to UPS today, I noticed that there was a huge facility available out there that is empty and available, and it would seem to me, I don't know if we're, that would be something our economic development people should be jumping all over. There's probably, have you? There's a couple hundred thousand dollar, couple hundred, couple hundred good-paying jobs there, so I'm hoping that we're doing something with that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Edna Stifel, 651 North Downing. I want to congratulate the five property owners that were given the Residence Pride Award last year, or last week, but I wanted to talk about the homes in my neighborhood, the 400, 500, 600, and 700 blocks of North Downing. We've seen 14 homes being either painted or renovated, and I said it's, I appreciate our neighbors doing all that. But the real reason I came is in 2007, Police Chief Wilcox organized the First Neighborhood Association. The first was the Shawnee Group, and our North Parks was started in 2008. We had a wonderful group of volunteers who worked feverishly on projects to better our city. We pushed for playground equipment for Kiwanis and Dawes Parks and erected it all. We sold mulch to raise money for the, and mowed grass with numerous unkept properties to put money in the treasury. We joined other volunteers to prepare and paint a house for a needy elderly lady on Harrison Street, helped the Southview members build a shelter at Moe Park, put new roofing on two small shelters at Kiwanis Park and the large shelter at Echo Hills Golf Course, and paid half the cost of the new fence at Kiwanis Park. We spent two Saturdays cleaning the Ash Street Route 36 entrance from Scott Drive to Air Vent Drive, and the Main Street Route 25A from Riverside to North Dixie Drive. Unfortunately, we have lost so many members. We've had two pass away and some illnesses in elderly, and the only two left in the North Parks is Russ Fashioner and me. We, I've lost my place, sorry.
That's all right.
But I'm asking the city to back the neighborhood groups and maybe help us to get back on our feet. None of the, the Southview, they're having trouble, the Southwest, and I think if the city would get behind us, just like when Chief Wilcox was here, he organized this, and we really got a lot done. And then back when Andy Burner was here, the city had a project, I can't recall the name, but it was making some really good strides in improving our city. Andy enlisted the neighborhood groups, business owners and employers, volunteers from all walks of life to help the needy and senior citizens with property improvement. I remember preparing a house on Drexel for an elderly couple when Andy had a large group come to town to paint homes. Andy managed to get 20-plus homes painted that week. Business owners and generous other donors donated funds for the paint and the other incidentals. We were on a roll. Then the project was dropped. I really think we need someone to bring the program back. There are many, many properties in our city that need improving, and the elderly need help, and we need to get more people that will help the older people. I really hope that the city would consider that. And about a year ago, our neighborhood improvement group began to push for something to be done with the abandoned church on Boone and Broadway. The city has recently gotten serious about finding a solution, thank goodness. Dave Hemrick House and Chuck Pelter of the Southwest Neighborhood Group work hard to keep their neighborhood neat, especially Candlewood Boulevard. Chuck worked to get the old McDonald Building cleaned up. It is out of the city limits, but one of the entrances to Pickwa. We went, he went to the township, and they have agreed to keep mowing the grass and keeping it neat. Thanks, Chuck. Jim Roth at Forest Hill Cemetery has been trying to get the Isoler vacant trailer court across from the cemetery cleaned up. He's been trying for about two years, and I know that there's been some action there, so that's good. And I want to thank Jim for the beauty of the Forest Hill Cemetery and the Chamber of Commerce and Jim Robinson for the neatness of the Veterans Memorial across from the cemetery. Those are beautiful places, and that trailer park just ruins it. About two years ago, I took part in the meetings to study the new parks, the new, the need for the parks, and got, and the city paid big money to have the 10-year project, a program planned. We were told it would make it easier to get secure grants for park improve, excuse me, park improvements. I haven't seen any information about the grants to improve the parks. There's much to do. Last, I want to thank the commissioners for passing the ordinance to purchase the playground equipment for Pittsburgh Park to replace the equipment torn down four years ago. Thanks to Ruth Kuhn for organizing the Friends of the Park six years ago and asking me to join her. The committee accomplished much, raised well over $100,000 to erect a statue to honor Airman Pittsburgh and the lovely memorial area around the statue, clean up Dawes Park where we had dead trees cut down, planted new trees, new blacktop, concrete under the benches, new lights, and cleaned the flower beds with the Four Seasons Garden Club. We are now about to start work to beautify the slopes on State Route 36, thanks to the nearly $80,000 we raised from grants, business, and generous citizens. We want all our citizens to be proud. This is our city. We all have to work together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Edna. Any other announcements? If not, we will move to the Oath of Office for Police Lieutenant Jeremy Weber.
It is my honor to administer the oath of office for the position of police lieutenant. So Jeremy, I would ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Jeremy B. Weber.
I, Jeremy B. Weber.
solemnly swear.
solemnly swear.
that I will obey.
that I will obey.
the Constitution.
the Constitution.
and laws.
and laws.
of the United States.
of the United States.
and of the state of Ohio.
of the state of Ohio.
that I will.
that I will.
in all respects.
in all respects.
observe the provisions.
observe the provisions.
of the charter.
of the charter.
and ordinances.
and ordinances.
of the city of Pickwa.
of the city of Pickwa.
and faithfully discharge.
faithfully discharge.
the duties.
the duties.
of the office.
of the office.
of police lieutenant.
of police lieutenant.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Yeah, you too. Congratulations, Jeremy. Jeremy.
This time, we're going to move our consent agenda up, and we're going to look at the consent agenda.
Tonight, there are two items on the consented agenda: approval of the minutes from the August 1st, 2019 Pickwa City Commission Work Session, the August 6th, 2019 Regular Pickwa City Commission Meeting, and the August 8th, 2019 Pickwa City Commission and Troy City Council Public Meeting. The second item is a resolution of appreciation for the public service of Bruce A. Jamison as a city employee.
All right, I'd like to invite Bruce, and I know you have some of your family, up here to join me at the podium, please.
You guys can face the audience. I will read this resolution of appreciation for the public service. Whereas Bruce A. Jamison has retired as police chief with the police department, whereas his retirement follows over 32 years of faithful and dedicated service to the city and its citizens. Now therefore being resolved by this commission of the city of Pickwa, Miami County, Ohio, all members elected thereto concurring that in recognition and appreciation for the public service of Bruce A. Jamison as police chief with the, with the police department, this commission tenders its unanimous and respectful tribute by this resolution, which shall be a matter of public and permanent record. This resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Bruce, thank you so much for the many years of service you have given our community and we, we, and your family. Blessings as you move into retirement. So, thank you so much. Thank you.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda passes. And the next thing on our docket is I need a motion to move, to move to executive session to consider pending or imminent litigation.
I'll make a motion. Second.
Can we have a roll call, please? Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Grissom?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner, vote.
Aye.
Okay, we are moving to executive session. Okay, we are back into our regular city commission meeting, and we are at new business on our agenda, and the first one is Resolution Number R-73-19.
A resolution directing staff to develop and implement policies and procedures relating to utilities.
Mayor, I'll defer to you.
Yes, so what we have before us is a resolution that the commission put together after meetings with citizens over the past months around utilities and a variety of other things, and so the resolution kind of outlines those things that we have asked our city manager to look into and some changes that we will make to some of our policies. So it is pretty straightforward as it is listed on the resolution. Do we have any comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any comments or questions from the public?
Yes, I have a couple of questions about it. If you look at your audited statements from 2017, done by the, you know, you prepared them, and the auditor, the State of Ohio, audited them, if you look in years 2012 or 2023, 2023, around in there, from now to there, you guys are millions of dollars in shortfall to service our debt. I mean, millions, not, not just 100,000 here or there.
Excuse me, excuse me, we're speaking to this resolution right now.
Okay, I am speaking to this resolution. I mean, so you're saying that you're going to pass, what are you, does this resolution involve money? Are you going to save, is there any cost savings to anybody in this? Or is this just, I mean, if there is no money being transacted here, then why waste your time? I'm assuming that you're doing this so there's some, some financial reward somewhere. I mean, either, you know, it's going in one hand and out the other, somewhere. I mean, you collect, you collect about $300,000 a year just in late fees, so are you telling, are you telling us, the public, that you're going to suspend that? I mean, how can you guys afford that? You're millions of dollars in shortfall now. Explain that to the public. Explain to everybody in Pickwa, how are you going to do this? Where are you going to get the money? Unless there's no money going to be transacted here. Are you saying, is that what you're telling us?
We are addressing the resolution as it stands before us.
Okay, so you're saying this resolution will have no financial impact whatsoever? Is that what I understand?
It's, it's, the resolution is before us.
Well, most, okay, I will sit down, but in most city commission meetings, there's a thing called performance metrics, and every time you propose something that has a financial impact, you provide the metrics for that so it can be measured. This pie in the sky stuff where you just pass stuff and there's no accountability, it's like going out and spending a million dollars on asphalt equipment, and the guy quits on you. I mean, there has to be accountability somewhere, so where is the accountability in this resolution? I would like to know. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment this evening on this resolution?
Hi, Leah, 406 West High Street. Hi. When it comes to this resolution, as far as like implementing everything, do we have deadlines for everything? Do we have a timeline? And I, when I say timeline, I mean like realistic, not like, like factoring in everything you have to do behind the scenes, like I'm not under the delusion you can snap your fingers. So when I say timeline, I mean like realistically. Do you have one? For each thing?
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, we're, we're working on everything, so we're going to try to finish these up as soon as possible.
That's not really a definite, no offense, but that's not really a definite answer. That's like a, here, I'm going to tell you this, and then I'm going to put you off later kind of answer, sorry. But I'm looking more for like a specific date.
I don't have a date, no.
Why not?
Because there's a lot that goes into this, and we're working on it.
We've been working on it for four months, no offense, but...
I'm just now getting the directives now.
Okay. And I would say one of the things with this, with the financial software package, as we look at the ones that they find, the transition, if we find one, that will take some time, and we don't know until we know what that package is. And I know that's one of the things that will address a lot of the issues, so I understand your frustration, but we will, I know that we are working on it, and hopefully, we'll have some things in line soon, so. Any other questions or comments on this resolution?
Since I'm the one who started all this, uh, thanks, everybody. Thank you, Kayzie, for being so open to calling me and taking personal, personal issues when it comes to this kind of thing. Thank everybody for taking the time to do this. I know you kind of got thrown into all this at the very end of it, but I know you've been following it at the same time. I don't know what the resolution is. I obviously have no details on it, but before we get started, I'll, I'll get with that after the fact, but before we get started, I just want to say thanks for, you know, thanks for doing this. I appreciate it. It means a lot to me.
Thanks, Jay.
Thanks, Jay.
Hi, Natalie Young, 1234 Marwood Drive, and I'm not really familiar with how all of this works, so I was just curious as to what, how do we know what the details are in this resolution? I mean, was there, what's the process here?
So what it was is we had meetings with citizens from, I want to say, May, June through the month of August, and in those meetings, we discussed some of the issues that they raised. They gave us a list of issues that they wanted us to look at, and during that time, the, our city manager did a background with our department heads, looking at all those different issues and talking about what we can do, what we can't do, and then the commission sat down and looked at that. We talked with the public more, and that's where these decisions came from. So, so the, so the thing that preempted this was a list that came from a group of citizens on some requests for some changes.
Okay, so is this all regarding like the software implementation, or is there, I mean, is this kind of like a bundled package that kind of goes through? Okay, is there, is that available?
It's in the resolution. It's in the resolution.
Yes, I didn't, is there somewhere I can have a copy of that?
It's, it's on, it's our, the agenda is always listed on the website, and there is, you can, what is it? There's a, there's a link on our city website that whenever anything comes on, what's it called? That...
We do, the alert and all.
The alert.
Nextdoor, it's on Nextdoor.
And Nextdoor, yeah, so if you're connected to Nextdoor and the alert that's on the city website, you will get the city agenda, the agenda for every city commission meeting as they come out.
Okay, yeah, I saw the...
They typically go out on Friday mornings, so...
Okay, okay, thank you. Yeah, this is what I was looking for, because I saw the agenda, but I couldn't find the detail of what that resolution is, so that's what I was curious about. Is there anything on here in regards to the level of the water being billed to the residential customers at flat 1,000? Is that being addressed in here yet? At a flat 1,000 gallons?
Yes, it's number five.
Number five, okay.
Section five.
Well, that's talking about level billing. I was referring to, for all the residential accounts, that when we're billed for our water usage, it's billed at either, you know, 5,000 gallons or 6,000 gallons, that it's, it's rounded, it's never an exact reading.
I, well, I'm not sure exactly what, you mean on your usage?
Yes.
On the usage?
Yeah.
Typically, the first 1,000 gallons just is base fee, and then you're, based on how much you use after that.
Yeah, I believe the base fee is for the first 1,000 gallons is $24, and then after that, you're billed $9.75 for every 1,000 gallons that you use after that, and that bill shows, you know, your consumption will be either five or it'll be six. It's not a 4,263 gallons. So that was one of my main concerns when we were having our work session, and I didn't, I don't think that's addressed in here.
I don't think we've looked at that at all, so just so you know.
Okay, because I think that's something, you know, we talk about switching energy-efficient appliances and things like that, but it's like unless I save myself 1,000, 1,000 gallons of water usage a month, I'm not ever going to feel any impact on my, on my water bill. So that was something I was curious about. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that something we can look at, get in charge for the actual amounts?
Well, we'll, we'll talk about it. I'm not sure how, I have to look at our ability to do that, so, we certainly can talk about it.
I just, I noticed on one of our utility bills, that's for commercial property, I believe, that that is extended out to the decimals, like that's, that's actual usage, so it might be like 4.58, you know?
We'll look at it.
But not residential. Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'm moving up Resolution R-73-19.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-74-19.
A resolution to authorize an amendment to the CDBG Downtown Revitalization Program Construction Management Services Contract.
Call on Mr. Smeazing to provide the staff report.
Thank you. As city commission may recall, in 2017 program year, we received an allocation through our Community Development Block Grant application for downtown revitalization program. This program is allowing for downtown businesses to be able to access up to nearly 2,000 This program is allowing for downtown businesses to be able to access up to nearly $200,000 for grant and loan applications that will provide for them to be able to put on a new roof, make facade improvements, do heating and mechanical improvements, and do other repairs and improvements necessary to their building. We believe they'll end up being about 12 downtown businesses who have participated in the program when it's all said and done. At the onset of the program, you might recall, we executed a contract with Pogomeyer Design Group, who was brought on board to facilitate the construction management services side of the project. And the original contract with Pogomeyer was for 42,000, I'm sorry, 44,500. As we began going through the applications and having the conversations with the building owners, we soon realized that we had a higher than expected number of applications received, which was a good thing. But that also resulted in some additional work for Pogomeyer in administering those construction management services, preparing specifications, bid documents, bidding the projects, and those sorts of activities. So as a result, we're requesting that the contract with Pogomeyer be amended to an amount of not to exceed $52,500. This would come entirely from the grant allocation, there is no local dollars necessary, this is all from the grant. And this would allow us to finish out the downtown revitalization program, which is due to be completed December of this year.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution?
I have a quick question.
Can you come, the microphone?
How big of an area is this campus? So is this just the immediate downtown? I mean, just what, what, what is the area of this, of this money pertaining to the grant?
Chris, you wanna answer that?
Is it two blocks, is it four blocks, does it go down, can Bing's get involved in this?
Chris, you wanna answer that? So the block grant program and the downtown revitalization fund is a competitive application. And to be able to submit for that type of funding, you have to meet the criteria for the program. And so it, for any area to be eligible, it has to be within a designated historic district. So in downtown Pickwa, there is a boundary of a downtown historic district, which is what falls under the, the guidelines that are adopted for historic preservation for those downtown structures. So the eligible properties are those that are within the downtown historic district.
So, for example, this couldn't be extended over to the bar area, Bing's and those places over there, which could use some revitalization in that area?
This particular program would not be useful for that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission? I think we already did that. Any more questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the res...
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-75-19.
A resolution of intent to vacate public right-of-way.
Mr. Schmeesing.
Thank you. This item relates to a local business that is working on replating some individual lots that their tract occupies. And as they go through this process, they've identified a portion of property that is actually part of their front lawn and/or parking area, if you will, which is a, an unimproved alley right-of-way. As it, as it relates to this request, the, the process to vacate unimproved public right-of-way requires that the application first be presented to the city commission, for you all to declare your intent to consider the item. And upon doing so, then we advertise the time, date, and location for a public hearing, which will be before the planning commission at their next meeting. Then they'll make a recommendation on, on whether or not they think it's appropriate to vacate the right-of-way and it'll return to you for final action. So this really is the first step in the process, simply to, to initiate the steps necessary to consider the item.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, uh, resolution R-75-19. Second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
The resolution passes. And now we move to resolution number R-76-19.
A resolution to authorize a contract for the Lock Nine Park Utility Project.
Mr. Schmeesing.
This resolution, if authorized, will allow for the first phase of the Lock Nine Park improvements to proceed, which includes the removal and installation of electric, storm, water, and wastewater infrastructure within the Lock Nine Park area. And it also includes the excavation and grading work that will expose the existing Lock Nine Canal walls, the entire 90-foot length, as opposed to just the short section that you can see now. This is the first step in reconfiguring the park space into the vision that's been documented in the Pickwa placemaking plan, which was preceded by the Downtown Riverfront Redevelopment Strategy Document, which identified the Lock Nine Park improvements as one of three catalytic projects that, if undertaken, would transform our, our downtown riverfront area. The other two being the repurposing of the Old Mo's Building into a restaurant space, and the other being the redevelopment of the Zollinger Building into downtown living units and a mixed use on the first floor. Both of those other two projects are well on their way to happening. We have a developer identified for both projects and things are progressing well on both fronts. So as you might imagine, those private sector interests that are investing in those properties are interested in when will the public improvements on Lock Nine Park happen. They're excited to see that and very much interested in seeing that happen to justify their, their investment. So this project would be for $565,951, which comes in well under the engineer's estimate of $670,000 for the project. And the contractor, Room Ball Construction, we've worked with previously, they're a very reputable firm, we've had very good results working with them. Their price in part, in part reflects that they're available and ready to proceed. So should this be authorized, we expect that they would be on site in very short order. I would note that there were seven different bids received for the project, so always a good thing when you have a competitive bidding environment, and I think our, our bid results reflect that.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
Yeah, will this open up the whole canal area that's going, end up being dug out?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution?
Where's this money coming from? Where, where is the money coming from, the 570?
The various utility funds.
So we're gonna pay for this out of our own pocket? We're not, this isn't a grant or something like that?
That is correct.
You guys are millions of dollars in the hole to, to fight, to retire our debt. Where are you getting this money at? Will you please explain that to the citizens of Pickwa?
Please.
Please.
I think if you, I think if you read the audit, you'll see that everything is...
I did read the audit.
You need to read it better because...
Are you telling me I'm wrong? Are you, are you telling me that I'm not correct?
Are you, you're in difference with the auditors.
Look, what, the auditors, okay, well, let me just, by way of clarification, what the auditors did, they, they red-zoned you on, on two big issues, your cash flow, they're, the auditors, the state of Ohio, and what you and her told them, that you guys were gonna start containing costs and look for new sources of revenue. Have you done that?
We're always looking for new sources.
You're spending, okay, okay, so what you told them last year that you would do, you would contain cost and look for new sources of revenue. Have you done either one of those things?
Absolutely, yes.
Can I, that's a request for public information, can you provide that to the public?
Yes, it's in the audit. Yeah, you have, it's out today.
It's part of the...
The audit's out today.
So that is to, part of today's audit?
You can, you can read it in the audit.
Glad to.
Any other questions or comments on this resolution?
You're putting $560,000 into building that everybody bought, the city, so to say, for a restaurant, right?
No.
No?
This is the park.
No, I'm talking about Mo's.
This isn't Mo's.
No, this is not Mo's.
So what, what did you purchase Mo's for?
I think it was about $43,000.
And what have you put into it?
Probably close to, it's all grant money that we received, probably close to 375.
So that's free money?
Yep.
Okay.
We got all grants for that.
Are you leasing this building?
Uh, no, we're gonna be selling it.
You do have prospects.
We do.
Any other questions or comments?
I got another question.
Yes.
Um, this 565,000, how far does this get us along financially? And I'm not a project being done.
Well, it's a, this was, this project's gonna happen in phases. We have lots of grant applications in now from numerous sources, so we're pursuing those, we're hoping to get as much as possible. Our ability to develop it will depend on the revenues coming in. We do have some donations, for instance, Premier Health just donated 280,000. So with donations and grants, we hope to move it forward very rapidly.
So does that 280,000 pay on this 565?
No, no, it's for future development.
Okay.
Yeah. These, these are all utility projects that have, have to be from the utility fund.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a, a motion to approve the resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Resolution number R-76-19 passes. And now we move to resolution number R-77-19.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to approve a lawsuit settlement agreement.
I will defer to Mr. Patrizio.
The proposed settlement before you was negotiated by the attorneys who were provided by the city's insurer for the city commission and Mr. Huff, who was sued individually. The city's negotiation team reviewed the settlement along with the city's insurance carrier. The agreement before you does not admit any wrongdoing on behalf of the city of Pickwa or Mr. Huff. The settlement team weighed the cost of continuing the ongoing litigation and the risk involved with going to a trial on the merits. Upon the recommendation of the attorneys representing the city and the city's insurance carrier, Moverma, the settlement team recommends the city commission approve the proposed settlement. Agreement provides for a complete release of all past, present, and future claims by Mr. Harder, whether with merit or without. And in consideration of this release, the city's insurance provider will pay 100,000 to Mr. Harder and his attorney. Additionally, the city will pay Mr. Harder two installments of $20,000 each next year, also, and also will pay an amount slightly less than $54,000 in late July 2020 to the Ohio Public Employers Retirement Sister on behalf of Mr. Harder. Agreement states that members of the city shall not make any disparaging remarks against Mr. Harder, and therefore I will not make any comments on the merits of Mr. Harder's claims, other than what has already been said. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution?
On the claims made against the city manager, has that been looked into by the commission? The claims that were made against him?
It was thoroughly investigated.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the public? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move with adopt resolution R-77-19.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to the public comment portion of our meeting. Do we have any public comment this evening?
I just want, I wanna just take a couple minutes. Several years ago, I thought it was a mistake when, when you guys put on the ballot, you two, especially Mr. Martin and Mr. Vogt, that to elect a mayor, that you guys, we, we would no longer allow the citizens of Pickwa to elect our mayor. And so we decided that you were gonna elect a mayor. And so it's time for a new mayor. You guys told us that, I'm, I was, I'm, it's great. When do we get a new mayor? She's had it for four years, when are you gonna pass it around? When's it gonna happen? Mr. Lee, can you, Commissioner Lee, can you tell me?
It'll be decided in the first meeting in January.
Okay, thank you very much. So I would like to get to the economic development that you guys have been pursuing for the last eight years, which in my opinion is a total disaster, has no merit and ought to be changed, ought to be do something different now before you waste any more money. And let me just give you a couple facts. Our, our income tax, the money raised from citizens and businesses over the last, since you've been here, Gary, over the last eight years is stagnant. You've taken in nine, 10, 11 million dollars over the last eight years, that's it. And that's, that's with a percentage increase, a small increase that the citizens allowed you to take. Our income is stagnant, which means that our, that the businesses, the income from our businesses and the income from our citizens in the city of Pickwa is stagnant. Now, there's just no other way around that. When, when is this madness gonna stop? When are we gonna embark on another program? Eight years of this is enough? I'm not the only one complaining, there's a lot of business people just like me wants to know when it's gonna end and where are we gonna start pursuing other aims? Okay, secondly, is that, you know, in, in 2018, there was 137 permits issued for new homes. 137. Pickwa had four. Now, that's an embarrassment, I mean, I mean, you guys just ought to resign right now. Anybody who's involved with economic development, the city of Pickwa, just ought to quit, just go find another job somewhere else and quit pursuing it here in the city of Pickwa. It's time for a change, I'm here to call for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment this evening?
I just wanted to get clarification on something and say some other stuff afterwards. The Lock Nine Park Utility Project, can, can we just run through that one more time? What is the purpose of it exactly? Like, what, what's the benefit of this project?
The utilities have to be relocated in order for the park to be developed.
Okay.
With amphitheater and all the other things, with the removal for the lock walls and so forth to the entrance of the park. The electric poles have to be removed and so forth for development to occur.
So is this the project that, Mr. Schmeesing, you said that was gonna be started by spring of 2019? Is that what the start of this is? I could pull the article real, real fast, I posted it on my page probably about a week or so ago, of an article, of interviews, that you said that there was a project in that area that was gonna be started in spring of 2019. Is this that same project?
So the, this project that we just, was authorized this evening, will start in about a month.
Okay. Right, I mean, so it was just delayed, like it's...
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to.
Okay, I'm just trying to get clarification on what it is.
There, there has been interest in start, this project has been under design and development for over, over a year at least, probably two years. And so there's been an ongoing effort to bring it to fruition. And we're now to that point where we're able to start the process.
So is it just mainly like electric work that needs to be done? 'Cause there's gonna be like a stage and, and stuff that's gonna be there, right? This is the, okay, so we're on the same page.
There'll be earth, earth moving and relocation of the utilities to get them out of the way.
Okay, okay. And what's the exact cost on that gonna be?
Well, this first phase was 500 and some thousand was the bid.
Okay. All right, um, thank you, I just wanted clarification on that. Also, um, the resolution, I had a really difficult time finding myself, is, I don't know why, I've got the email, the automatic email notifications myself, and I just, we were sitting here trying to find it, I can't find it anywhere. Um, I'm not saying it's not posted, but I think this goes back to the fact that that website's a little bit too difficult. I mean, I've been on computers since I was 16 and I can't find it.
There is a alert email that sends out emails whenever there's any type of meetings or anything like that. And the commission agenda always goes out on that, it also goes out on Nextdoor, if you're connected to Nextdoor, which is kind of like a community Facebook, if you will.
Okay.
Yeah.
It should be, it should be on the front page of our website.
And it's also on the front page of the website, too, so...
It's on the front page of the website, too. Okay, 'cause I was just looking at the automatic email that I got, and all it was, was basically just the outline of this, it wasn't like a specific...
Put in the PDF.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Either that or I just couldn't find it from my own.
Show me where you can get it.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's there.
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Um, and there's no specific, I mean, is there a specific timeline of when that's gonna go under? Like, are you guys gonna start tomorrow to start work on some of this stuff?[1779.63] Like, are you guys gonna start tomorrow to start work on some of this stuff?
Yes, we're already working on it.
Already working on it?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the one thing that I, I guess I could, uh, suggest is as soon as anything at all is figured out, can somebody please let me know? Cause as you can already tell, we've got a lot of tensions high right now, and I'm trying my best to quell them a little bit, but at the same time, I, I just wanna give people something.
As soon as, as soon as decisions are made, we will announce them in city commission meetings. So that will be the...
Or on the website.
Yeah, or on the website or whatever.
Or on the website.
But it, it will be, I mean, it will be public knowledge at, during commission meetings.
So what's the process? You guys are just gonna look into it and then it has to be voted on? Or at this point, now that it's been voted on, you just make the changes now as it, as it goes?
What, what we will be doing from staff is we will be working up the policies and so forth and sending them to the commission for review and see if that, and then the commission can make the decision at that point.
And that's gonna be done at the commission meeting?
And some of these policies, and we can just make note at the commission meeting, some of these things we don't have to vote on per se. It's just the fact that we're, it's a policy that will be on the website. So we will make sure that we make some type of public statement that this, um, for example, the level billing policy has been taken care of, it is on the website, that kind of thing. So, um, and I know that, I know that Mr. Huff and other folks have been working on this already, so.
Okay, cool. That's all I want. Thanks.
Mm-hmm.
Natalie Young, twelve thirty-four Marwood. I don't know if I'm supposed to do that again. Um, I have a question in regards to the reserves, like the reserve cash that's sitting in the utility funds versus this, you know, the, um, way that the financial statement reads. It says that all of the future debt payments are to be paid from pledged future revenues. So, um, you know, like over the last ten years, I'm kind of estimating here, but the increase in cash and cash equivalents in the utility department only, you know, funds has increased like ten million dollars. So it's like, at the end of two thousand seventeen, it was like twenty-one million dollars sitting there. So, um, are any of the loan payments allowed to be paid out of any of that money? Or is that all, is all of that money sitting there to fund projects like we just approved?
I'm gonna let our finance director more answer. She's more apt at giving you the correct answer.
It's both. At the time that we build up funds, they're in anticipation of projects that may happen in the future, but also at the time that we go out and borrow for those funds through the OWDA, we have to show that we have in reserves adequate supplies for a certain period of time and that we have rate structures in place that will support those.
So with that being said, the projected rate increases are probably already known?
They're estimated, and that's what has been given to the lender. And then at the time that we anticipate a rate to go in, the commission will study what our recommendations are and why. Because at the time you can't participate, we had in building a water treatment plant, we knew that there would be expenses incurred, but until we're actually operating a plant, the actual expenses are not known. So we review annually and budget accordingly to the needs of each of those departments. And then we look at the rate structures on a annual basis with a projection for three to five years.
Okay. I'm gonna let that sink in for just a moment. Um... So you're saying that when you, um, applied for the loans, that you had to kind of give a, how, I mean, how many? What is the operating reserves that you have to have? Like, is that based on a number of days or a number of years? How is that figured? If that's... You said you have, you said you need to, you had to prove to them basically that you had so much sitting in reserves for operating expenditures out into the future?
It would depend on what fund you're looking at and what type of borrowing you're looking for.
Well, I'm just, I'm mostly...
On-term, short-term, depending on what type of capital projects you have budgeted. Um, so it's, it's very complex.
I understand that.
And it's also reviewed by multiple entities, and, uh, the state is the borrowing source. So they look in detail at what we are proposing to accept that or we wouldn't even be eligible for the borrowing.
Well, I guess what I'm trying to find out or trying to understand here is, you know, if I look at the future minimum payments that are due on the debt, you know, coming up in the next couple of years, the future minimum payments that we have to pay per year are in excess of five million dollars, beginning in like two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four timeframe. And if I look back through the utility department's revenue and, you know, less their expenses, the amount that you're paying for the purchase power and all that, the city utility department has never, from any of the years that I've looked at, profited that much extra cash to be able to meet these obligations. And so if that's the case, and that's, if that's true, you know, it's debatable, we can have that discussion. But the rates are going to be increasing somewhat significantly to be able to cover that if we're not allowed to use the reserve cash that's sitting there. So my main question is, is that, that twenty-one million dollars in cash that's sitting there? I understand you have operating revenues and you have things like that that have to be paid for, but is that allowed to go towards any of the debt payments?
Well, the twenty-one million that's in reserves, evidently you're looking at all of the utilities.
That's correct.
Each utility has to be self-sustaining. So you can't lump that twenty-one million together. So you'd have to look at, for instance, the electric doesn't have debt. So there's...
Right.
No concern with that at this, at this point in time. So you'd have to look at each individual fund. And yes, there are in place rate structures for increases, and I would anticipate there would be some form of increase in several of the utilities, um, in the future.
Okay, cause I don't, I don't believe that in the financial statements that the, uh, ne, maybe that, never mind. I believe that it is separately stated for the cash position of each, you know, water, electric, et cetera.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so kind of with that being said, I guess my, my other point that I was wanting to make is that as far as cost containment into the future, I mean, is that something that we are being mindful about going forward? Because I think a lot of us are very concerned that, you know, our utility bills are already extremely high and that they're no doubt going to get higher. And so as far as the way that the utility department is budgeting and spending their, you know, I don't know if discretionary funds is the right word, but, I mean, are there procedures in place for cost containment going forward?
Well, I think each year we're looking at how do we, uh, contain all the costs and keep them as low as possible for citizens. So that's an ongoing process that we do all the time.
Okay, cause I know, I mean, like in the two thousand seventeen financial statement, this was a general, you know, overall, I think, um, for the entire city funds. But, you know, the budget for two thousand eighteen was higher than the two thousand seventeen expenses. And I'm aware of kind of the way that the city funds work. You know, if you don't spend your allocated money, then you lose it the next year cause it doesn't get rebudgeted for and things like that. And so I just, I guess...
Yeah, one of the, and if you talk about cost containment, one of the things we look at with the completion of the wastewater treatment plant, uh, because of the automation going in, we will be able to go down to one shift only instead of having three. So those are the type of cost containments that we're able to eliminate to keep those costs down overall.
Okay, yeah, cause that was one of the points that we discussed in our work session was, you know, the wages in the utility department were four million dollars ten years ago and seven million dollars in two thousand seventeen. So, you know, an explanation isn't, I'm not asking for an explanation, but it just does not seem like there is a real effort to contain costs. And we're just, I know we've got a lot of projects and things like that that we're wanting to get done, but as far as putting that burden onto the citizens, I just like to make sure that we're being mindful of that.
I think we're very concerned about that and doing what we can to contain it.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Um, you've already spoken during public comment. Um, there's, I'm sorry, it's only one time. I apologize. Nick's got you.
Nice try, Nick.
Nick Ventura, one oh eight Gene Drive, Pickwa. Um, I'm back there, I'm, I'm beyond frustrated. Because I, I hear that the rates are gonna, there, there's, it's no doubt they're gonna increase. I just got a four hundred and thirty-two dollar utility bill last month. I don't understand it. And there's, like Bill Jockle was saying in the resolution, there's no financial benefit anywhere in there for the citizens. I helped Jay run the Watch Pickwa page. We are getting messages, citizen after citizen after citizen after citizen, hundreds, planning to move. We're losing citizens. Now, since nineteen ninety-seven, Pickwa has only grown by two hundred and four people in twenty years. Troy's grown by thirty-five hundred. Sidney's grown by twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, something like that. It doesn't seem to me at all that anybody is concerned about the citizens. Not at all. Now, I am, I do see that when, when we had the tables down here and we were talking, it looked like there was some concern. But it's been three or four months. There's nothing in the plans for financial, I can't afford to keep paying a four hundred dollar utility bill. I don't think it's logical, I don't think it's reasonable to think that cool air, lights, and trash are worth four hundred dollars a month. It doesn't make sense to me. I, I have to get that off my chest. I know you guys have been hearing this, but we're, we're losing citizens. The citizens are frustrated, the citizens are ticked off, and now we're still talking about rate increases taking from the utilities to put five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to this. I had to voice it, cause it's, I, I, I don't know. Four hundred dollars a month, it's way too much. I'm on the low end.
Any other public comment? If not, we will move to our city manager's report.
Uh, no report tonight.
Okay, we will start with Commissioner Lee.
Hey, um, I guess I have a question. Um, I got called, and I, I called Gary today about, there's a bunch of birds in front of Suzie's, I guess, that, uh, like to use the, the bathroom. And Casey, I guess you know about it, cause Tom Hudson told me that he's, he's contacted a lot of people and he, he wants something, something done. And, uh, Gary told me that something's in the works, and what is in the works, uh, one of the possibilities costs a lot of money, but we're planning on cleaning that up. Is that the...
Yeah, we're gonna be power washing. The starlings come in this time of the year, uh, and it is a problem in the downtown because of the dense foliage of the trees. They, it's where they like to gather. There's a lot of different things you can do, from, uh, sound to grape smell that they don't like and other things. Uh, but we're going to be power washing and watching it very closely. The bigger question is, uh, which is quite costly, is that if you want to remove or replace the trees in the downtown, that's a major project, uh, it's a major cost. So I think that's something, if the commission considers that, we would certainly have to look at, uh, at what the cost would be to do such a project.
Okay. Um, another thing he said, he asked me, I forgot to tell you this when I was on the phone. Uh, there's street signs, the street signage, we're replacing the signs in certain sections of town. Where are we at on that? Are, are we completely done replacing all the street signs?
You, you talk, must be talking about going from the green ones to the black ones.
Yes.
I have to check and see where we are citywide on that.
All right. If you'll just let me know.
Be happy to do so.
And, um, is it possible to let the citizens know about updates to economic development? Because some of their frustration is that there's a lot of stuff that happens in town. They don't know about it. And, and some of the things you can't tell, I understand, but some things we do, we just need to toot our horn and let people know there are good things that are going on in Pickwa.
Uh, we'd be happy at the next meeting to give you an economic development update so everybody can hear, but...
Sounds good to me.
There are, and a lot of jobs available here in Pickwa, so...
There are, there are, I know that. So, um, school started this week, so I wanted to wish everybody, uh, welcome back to school for all the students and parents. I know you're looking for that, that break. You can enjoy a little bit, but everybody else, watch the kids as they're out there and, uh, be conscious of, of them. I know my wife sent the kids back to school to, today, and she was, you know, working harder than what she normally was, so, as usual. So, and that's all I've got. So thank you.
Thanks. Commissioner Grissom?
Um, I don't have anything at this time.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Martin?
Um, yeah. Um, went down to the forum down there for the taking out of the dam, which I can tell you I'm definitely not in favor of. Um, but this is a call to all the people that want to do power sports on the river. If they change, if they take the dam out, there will be no power sports on the river. So if you actually like going down there for doing test and tune on your boat or skiing or whatever it is, you need to let the commissioners know and the city manager know. So that way we know that there is a following of the river as it is. Now, the dam, the dam can be made safe. That, that's, the dams are relevant. The big thing is, is what does everybody want? Not what they use some form that says X amount of people do this, X amount of people do that. No, call the commission, call the city manager, parks, and let them know the things that you like doing down on the river and if you want the dam to go or if you want it to stay. That's it.
Commissioner Vote?
About the dam, I have to agree or disagree with Mr. Lang and his little statement. Back in nineteen seventy-five, seventy-six, I was a, I'm a member of the boat and ski club. I was tournament director for our waterski tournament we had down there. And in nineteen seventy-six, the AWSA, the American Waterski Association, determined that the Pickway Waterski Site was the best tournament site in the country. Uh, there were several world records set down there. My oldest son, David, was the chief judge this year, this past week, at the national championships in Florida. And a friend of mine was down there, Jerry Hosner, would set a world record at this ski site in nineteen seventy-six. I think turning that dam out would be a detriment to this area. We're talking about lock nine park and getting use out of the river. You take the dam out, the use of the river is done. Look at the river now, because they got it at the low level, it's like a creek. The river is done if you take the dam out. So I suggest, just like John said, if you have any interest in the river and the power sports and the fishing and that, let us know. Because, uh, it is necessary to have that recreation down there. The boat club, boat ski club is not as active as it was. Uh, however, things come back. And the, uh, slalom site down there where the slalom course is, is one of the best in the country because the edges of the bank, uh, don't let the water backwash into the site and it's good water all the time. Uh, I don't know where Jeff got his information, uh, but AWSA declared that one of the best waterski sites in the country back in the late seventies. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a couple comments. Um, I will, uh, reiterate what Commissioner Lee said, school is open, so watch out for the buses and the children and walking and riding bikes as they are making their way to school. Um, also, I, um, am starting up my walks with the mayor. Um, I have done these before. We're gonna start in Ward One. And so you will look, uh, look at my Facebook page and the city webpage to, um, find out when I'm gonna do that. And what that is, is they are walking meetings in the different wards of the city, just a way to get into those wards and kind of look and see and talk to citizens who, um, live in those wards about issues that you have that pertain to that part of the city. So again, we'll start in Ward One and we'll move all the way through Ward Five. So those dates will come out very soon. And that is all I have. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are...